Conference pursuant to one M R S A, section four oh three B D two D and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Members of the public may join in the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting I D eight three four eight nine six zero seven seven eight eight and password zero eight one seven five six or via computer at the link provided. Members of the public may also submit comments via the city council website at W W W dot Sanford, Maine dot org under government slash city council slash contact the council. Would you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me for a moment of silence, please. And now for roll call, Counselor Hitchcock.
Present.
Counselor Trench Montane.
Present.
Counselor Martell.
Present.
Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
And Counsel Stackpole is going to be late. He did call ahead. He but he is at his camp now shutting down for the season. So, yeah, isn't that a shame? Counsel, Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
And I am Becky Brink, the mayor. And we also have present with us Executive Administrator Larissa Ricketts and City Manager Steve Buck. And now for the minutes of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I believe Counsel Hanselman, you have a comment to make?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to make a motion to approve the minutes with an amendment to page two where it says that Anne Hanselman is the Larissa's already got it. It says I'm the property subcommittee chair, which I am not.
Okay, all right, thank you. So that'll be corrected. Were there any other amendments to be made? All right, so could I have a motion, please? Trench Montane.
Motion to accept the minutes from August fifteenth.
And a second, please.
A second.
All right, thank you very much. And all those in favor? All right, and just one that's absent. The Bob will be in later. And now for the mayor's report. I just have one report to do, and it's on a sad note. Thomas H. Jones, seventy-six, retired Sanford Police Chief and Law Enforcement Officer of thirty-six years, passed away peacefully at his home August nineteenth after fighting a long battle with cancer. Tom was hired in May of nineteen ninety-four by then-Chief Gordon Paul into the rank of major of operations. On October twenty twenty-two, Tom was selected by the then-town council to become Chief of Police. Tom served in his capacity until July of twenty oh seven, when he retired. Tom was committed to the safety and security of Sanford and was recognized by Strategies for a Stronger Sanford upon his retirement with a distinguished contributor to youth award. Tom fostered partnerships with our area state and local law enforcement agencies by further developing the regional special response team and assigning a Sanford Police Sergeant to supervise and support Maine drug enforcement in their York County Field Office. Of these partnerships, both of these partnerships still exist today, a testament to Tom's experience and foresight for the future of success of policing of Maine. So I'd like to thank Tom Jones for his fantastic services, and he will definitely be missed. All right, next, we'll have Steve Buck will do his city manager's report.
Thank you. The first item, I'm very pleased to announce that the David and Linda Pence Charitable Trust has awarded two grants within Springvale. This is from the Linda and David and Linda Pence Charitable Trust. First is in the amount of three thousand ninety-nine dollars and four cents for a message board to be placed at the Nassau Little Theater on the Main Street side entrance. The second of the grant awards for this year, also from the Pence Trust, goes to the Sanford Parks and Recreation Department to go towards the playground equipment and improvements at the Springvale Playground in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. This is part of the city's parks plan and the additional funding for which will be requested in the next fiscal year twenty-five capital plan moving forward. The next announcement is Richard Chip Schrader, longtime Springvale and then Goodall Library Director. Chip has given his letter of resignation to the Goodall Library Board of Directors and has copied the city. Chip's work for the Goodall Library will end on October first of this year, when he will assume his position as Library Director for the Scarborough Library. He stated many family connections in Scarborough was the influence to his decision. Chip will complete the move of the Goodall collection to the new temporary location in the Sanford Center for Shopping as the Goodall Library completes its expansion and renovations over the next couple of years. The board has named Nicole Bowley as interim director until a final replacement is made. The Growth Council renovations, City Director of Facilities Alex Hamerly continues to work with the Growth Council Director Keith McBride on the renovation of the former chamber space adjacent to Main Street. Original design involved the demolition of several internal walls and the creation of three new rooms. The project went to bid with little interest, and after the resulting bids for work far exceeded what was allocated within the resources, the facilities, and Growth Council then reassessed the renovations to demo a single wall and create a large front conference space, no necessary modifications to the sprinkler system, minimal changes to the electrical utilities, and leaves the expanded office space to the rear for a small business association as well as Southern Maine Finance to offer services within the Growth Council's complex. The Growth Council staff will retain their pre-existing space as well as a small conference room to the rear of the complex. Facilities believes that they can complete this work in-house with a minimal amount of outside services, and the work should start in the very near future. Insurances, the city is to receive, or excuse me, received a notice from Maine Municipal Association's Workers Compensation Fund that we are receiving a dividend check in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars and six forty-five thousand and six dollars as the city's loss ratio was under forty percent and our three-year loss range, loss ratio was under seventy-five percent. It's the work of the Safety Committee and the city's department managers that have played a key role in achieving these lower ratios. The city further anticipates a ten percent reduction in the ensuing calendar year Workers' Compensation Fund assessments as our experience mod continues to fall, which is a very positive direction, and most importantly, as recently achieving the Tier Three designation. The Tier Three designation comes from the work of the Safety Committee and the departments in meeting all of the criteria set forth under the Workers' Compensation Safety Inspection Program for facilities, operational policies, safety record, rapid return to work policies, and a host of other milestones. This should see as much as a ninety thousand dollar reduction in the overall assessment when fully accounted for in the ensuing year's cost assessment. Finally, for state reimbursement pursuant to public law, twenty twenty-two, chapter six forty-five, amended the law that allows for the city to file for up to a twenty thousand dollar reimbursement for the time spent as well as legal review in developing ordinances that ultimately allowed for adult-use marijuana retail stores in our community. Our Community Development Director Ian Halsey was able to document total staff and legal expenditures over the last three-year period of seventy-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-four cents, of which sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars were in city staff time deliberating and developing said ordinances, and five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six was in direct legal expense to review the same. Multiple pages of supporting documents were attached to the file. I'll report back to you when hearing from the state on that pending reimbursement. The last thing ahead is the tax commitment is out. I will note that we have a new assessor. We have a new relatively new treasurer. We had a new printing company this year. We have our old I S department, Ben's in the back, the old I S department, but all working with a new Vision Eight program and linking that into the Munis system for the first time. So it was quite a change in the complexities in the packaging. Also, new to the whole mix was the personal property was automated into Vision, the new Vision Eight for the first time. They also further automated many other components to include our tax and financing districts are now fully automated. So for the first time, I have a predictive tool now that I can call our assessor at any point in time, and he can give me an update on what our TIP districts would throw off in that that given point in time. So it was an excellent team that would that that made all of that happen this year. I have a meeting with all of them later this week to sort of hot wash that down and see what we can do for improvements going forward and see where we may need to to reassign job functions and duties going forward because there were so many integrated elements in that system that just came from, you know, years of the same people doing it and such and that. So we'll hot wash that down and to ensure an even more streamlined system going forward. That's all ahead on the manager's report.
Thank you very much. And the next report we're going to do is on the home from the homeless task force. It'll be an update. In case you're unaware, every other Monday, this task force meets, and there are probably about fifteen different organizations or more represented in this meeting. And I am amazed at how much I learn every time I go to this meeting. And I think that the other each organization is learning something from the other organizations that are also there and we're working together as a team. So I really appreciate, Steve, your bringing this task force together, and I think you'll when you hear the report, you'll understand the need. So, Steve, go ahead.
First and foremost, I want to thank you, all of the community partners that the city experiences as part of working on the homeless task force. Without them, we certainly could not have any of the level of of success that we're currently having. So as 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 I have been, I continue to report out on two major segments of homeless people. The first is those asylum seekers that came to our community as new mayors, and the other category is the unhoused residents within Sanford. So currently, under those two different categories, let me report out to you first on our the asylum seeker families. Between May first of this year and July twentieth, with the closure of the emergency shelter, which was at the Saint Ignatius Gym, total of thirty-five families comprising approximately one hundred and fifty individuals, were provided emergency housing, food, health care, and other support services as asylum seekers here in the city. So that accounts for the thirty-five families are being assisted with our community partners and again, about one hundred and fifty people. This chain, this last report seems to fluctuate, but we currently have twenty-eight families that have been located in the permanent housing of the thirty-five. One of those families is still pending permanent housing mid-September, but they have that assignment made to them. Three families remain currently housed temporarily, being being paid for out of York County Community Action. Each of those three families has a housing navigator assigned as well as a case manager, and they're still seeking for permanent placement in an apartment for those families. Twenty-five of these thirty-five families are now housed either in Sanford or Springvale, and their students are enrolled in our schools. And I believe for the first time, we'll have over a hundred students in our school system that are non-English speaking as their primary language. Three of the families that we either started with or came in during the shelter period are no longer in our service and have moved to other locations. The city's General Assistant Department did not see any qualified asylum seeker applicants stemming from the recent closure of the City of Portland Shelter, as in the Expo. We were anticipating embracing for that, but we did not, as Portland and the state of Maine contracted for two hotels and placed those families into those temporary shelter locations. Asylum seekers currently are have ongoing HEAP, which is the Home Energy Assistance Program. They're making applications for this winners for those who are in the permanent housing. They also are applying for under the Affordable Connectivity Program for Internet connectivity. And again, the school enrollment has been completed and school supplies have been assured for those newly enrolled students. Our city's General Assistant continues to fund the monthly rent for the permanently-placed asylum-seeking families as well as any remaining monthly maximums applied towards food or other essential services. So not different from the monthly, the report that I gave you for July, our General Assistant Director called me about five o'clock tonight. Oh, I've got the new numbers for August. I said, can't take them right now, so I'll get those back to you for the next report and do a month-over-month replacement. But in talking with our director earlier today, it is the continued cost of housing, not just for the asylum seekers, but our unhoused residents. It's 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 housing, housing, housing. So that's that's a very costly element when you look at the monthly allowances. So our resident unhoused population, the homeless task force again was activated. We're meeting biweekly. The Sanford Police Department Mental Health Unit, you hear me refer to it as the M H U, tracks the number of contacts. They do interviews. They interview the contactees and maintain a database on the unhoused and the associated reason or reasons for people being unhoused. Due to the rapid increase in the number of unhoused in the last year as the increase increased presence of financially unhoused, mental health, and most dramatically substance use disorder, the task force was activated again and has been meeting biweekly. So to date, we have our community partners, the city council representation, Sanford Housing Authority, York County Community Action, Sanford School Department, Sanford Police Department and its Mental Health Unit. Sanford Fire Department is now in there for the pending community paramedicine program that I'll speak about, the York County Shelter Program, Caring Unlimited. We've had Senator Collins, State Representative for York County there, and a multitude of city staff to include our communications coordinator. So the scope of the task force is to identify both short-term and long-term solutions towards the coordinated address of homelessness within Sanford and our surrounding region. Again, I want to give the recognition recognition to the community partners. Without their assistance, the city would be in a very different place. So for current status, there's still one hundred and forty-seven unique contacts, one hundred and six known unhoused people in our community, thirty of which were identified as having high probability of becoming housed using their partnered resources, and those top thirty are being worked on. That still leaves us with seventy-six people that have very uncertain pathways at this point in time. The group discussed again this this past week, the proper disposal of needles remains an issue. Maine Health has donated ten needle syringe, syringe boxes to the city. The M H U is working to identify the most strategic locations for placement, such as near parks, especially with playgrounds, and or or other most visited public areas within our community. A system to empty empty the and dispose of the needles is being addressed. Hopefully, we can identify a pathway with Southern Maine Healthcare to go into a medical waste system. Otherwise, they'll have to be packaged and secured, and then they can go into the normal waste stream. Case management is ongoing for is ongoing for the unhoused. Cases are only being discussed generically as we cannot release any names to discuss any individuals. York County Community Action has dedicated case manager that is that is to be working with the M H U on the current cases and to identify resources as needed. The York County Shelter Program continues to work on a lease with the Sanford School Department to utilize a portion of the Lafayette School as a warming shelter. That shelter is to be operational by October fifteenth of this year. So on nights, meeting certain weather criteria, the shelter will open up to house people overnight. A resource center is also going to be coupled with that on the second floor, so they'll be on two distinct floors, shelter on the first floor, resource center on the second floor, using separate and distinct entrances to accommodate each one of those services. City staff met onsite at the Lafayette School today with with representation from the York County Shelter Program as well as the Sanford Housing Authority to measure the facility and to ensure and affirm what it can be used for and at what level. We're still looking for a space for the peer support center that was previously on Washington Street that closed, was was not able to renew its lease in that location. The impact of that peer support center, the day after it closed, the impact was was visually seen within our community because people seeking those services had nowhere to go and seek those services further. They are working with potential utilization on a short-term basis, at least with the suites are building off of Main Street as being a potential viable location. York County Community Action and our Mental Health Unit and partners continue to work to stand up for a temporary resource center. This will be stood up at York County Community Action's six Spruce Street location as it has was stood up in a prior year. Our community partners will be Y C C A C, Sanford Housing Authority, North Parish Church, York County Shelter Program, and the Nassau Health Center will be will be making themselves available in that resource center to provide services throughout the two-week period anticipated to be the last week in September or and or starting the first week in October. The group previously had discussed putting in portable toilets by the police department. Those toilets have been ordered. One is an ADA accessible unit and one is a standard unit. They're going to be placed there for a thirty-day period. The two units, two units are being placed there by the police department so they can be monitored and allow for further contact of those who are being served. Needle boxes will also be part of that location and installation. Housing placement and finances, York County Community Action has assigned, again, a case manager or and or housing navigator to our M H U unit. They will be working to implement that this week and have that position, that person further coordinated within the office space within the police department. We had talked about an application for AmeriCorps positions of up to four applications. That was to be due on September twenty-first, but it was made known that there was an application opening for the August thirty-first deadline, so I believe the application was made for that deadline, so we should hear an earlier response than originally was anticipated. The outcome's still pending. It's again, it's for up to four housing navigators that will come to us from AmeriCorps, already trained, and they'll be distributed amongst our partnering agencies for a coordinated effort towards finding permanent placement for our unhoused. Under resources and capacity, again, we had a meeting with the state of Maine, the Governor's Office of Innovation, as well as Maine State Housing, with the York County Shelter Program and York County Community Action in the city, requesting for funds to expand shelter beds within York County, i.e. through the York County Shelter Program. It was made known to us that not only was there not any funds allocated in this year's state budget towards the expansion of shelter beds, there was not even any money to assist with the operation of the current beds over and above what is currently allocated under the Emergency Shelter and Housing Program on E Shap, and therefore, I was very disappointed with the outcome of that meeting. We truly thought that there was going to be the opportunity to muster funds, pay to renovate some facilities at the York County Shelter location, and more than double our capacity here for York County, but that the outcome of that meeting was was not the case. Our housing first model, the Sanford Housing Authority, is actively engaged in the feasibility study to purchase land, to engage with a developer for the construction of, and to partner to operate York County's first, housing first model of potentially forty units. Facility once built will provide transitional housing for those needing twenty-four-seven case management to make the transition from homelessness to permanent housing and work. The Housing Authority will work on a community education and capital campaign as they work on a competitive grant application pending for this October. Maine State Housing indicates that they can fund up to twelve projects across the state this year for this application round, of which two of those should be located in York County. Under mental health capacities, our Mental Health Unit continues to work with Maine Health and or Southern Maine Healthcare on a memorandum of understanding to allow more expedient access to mental health service services within the network to streamline access without impacting the Sanford Emergency Department as is currently the situation. The outcome should be known in the next by the time we meet in two weeks. Community Paramedicine Program, or C P P, Assistant Chief Smith reported out that the city has achieved licensure under the state of Maine for a community paramedicine program as all protocols have been met. The city should receive word this week that the state intends to distribute a hundred thousand dollar grant towards the start of that community paramedicine program. We are seeking a partnership with both S M H C and Nassau Community Center now for community grants to finish off that first-year position for community paramedicine. Under the program, it would be integrated in with the with our police department's Mental Health Unit as a primary mission to provide services outside of the hospital setting for those in need under medical direction from either Nassau and or Southern Maine Healthcare. It was a very exciting opportunity there. I met with our assistant, our Deputy Chief Small today, who recently returned from a training as far as future applications for federal funding, which which is where the Maine Options Program came from. In in there, one of the training modules that he went to was about community paramedicine and how it interrelates and ties into a mental health unit. So I asked him, he brought a wonderful presentation, not a Venn diagram, but kind of a modified donut diagram. Could you please bring that to public safety meeting for this coming week because it just, we are so close to meeting that national model that they say you have to have all of these components and they have to be integrated in this fashion. We are so close to hitting all of those marks, so.
Nice.
Like to continue to explore how that plays itself out. As far as York County, the county government is concerned, Lehman's Way and homelessness, I have been put onto a task force there for York County to finalize the expansion of Lehman's Way, to talk about substance and detox, the expansion of a substance use and detox center there, as well as further use of county resources to combat homelessness. So the anticipated dialogues will link directly to our city's task force work. I sent a link out to on the projects page for the city. All of the homeless updates are on there, the work of the task force, so I linked that out so they could have eyes on that. So it's not to reinvent the wheel, but to start from a a proper place. The last thing that I'll make mention of, November is National Homeless Awareness Month. The task force took note of that, so the city and its community partners will coordinate and communicate the issues around homelessness within our region and use the opportunity to solicit further resources and partners to address homelessness. Our communications coordinator obviously will capitalize on the national awareness designation to further communicate our regional work. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Nate?
Just a brief question for you, Steve. I don't know if you have the answer to this. With the expansion of Lehman Way, did they tell you if that's going to be solely still with the criminal justice system, or are they going to accept outside applicants for that program?
I I don't know that detail at this point in time. I'm new new to that conversation, but I wanted to ensure that I was part of the conversation. We have representation on the creation of the Public Safety Committee, but we don't have strong representation on Lehman's Way, which is a critical component for addressing substance use disorder within our our region.
Thank you, Steve.
But I'll ask that question and see if I can find the answer for you.
Thank you.
I think that Nate gets some type of award. I think that's the first time I've ever heard you not have an answer. So you get the prize tonight. Also, I'd like to add to that, on the twenty-sixth of September, we will be having a meeting of multiple organizations here in this room, and we'll be talking about the housing in Sanford, which will also include probably the unhoused and many other situations. So it will be, you can use the, you can zoom in, or you can come here in person, or so we will be setting up tables here with a lot of us around the table talking. So it'll be mostly, there won't be a whole lot of time for questions, but we will be questioning amongst ourselves a lot of stuff, so we might even address some of your questions during that process. At the very end of the meeting, I will ask, are there any questions at that time? So just to make sure that the the board all gets an opportunity to ask questions. Okay, so let's, moving on, which is one of my favorite things, is we have the communications and presentation, and we have police sergeants' promotion recognition, and so who is handling, going to be presenting this? Our Chief of Police is coming down, Chief Anderson. And. Our chief of police is coming down, Chief Anderson, and assistant chief, no, you're just taking pictures? Okay. I wonder who we would take pictures of? And how many people are here for this recognition? Raise your hand if you're, here was relatives and friends and, wow. I, I get you guys in the back in the uniforms, that's an obvious. Okay, Chief Anderson, take it away.
I think we filled the gallery this evening.
I think you did.
Yes.
It's fantastic.
So we wanted to say thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, the counselors, Mr. Buck, for allowing us to present the promotions of four of our team members. Promotions are one of the most important internal events for our department and for the city as well. The development, selection, and continued education of our supervisors is part and parcel of the foundation of maintaining our police department in the city. It also supports our endeavor to, to complete our mission, which is excellent law enforcement service. If we don't have good leaders, you probably, we probably won't recognize the excellent work that, that can be done and that, that oftentimes is being done. The leaders of our agency officially recognized with rank, or sometimes unofficially recognized by the peers that they serve with, carry much of the weight for the success of our department. We adhere to the idea that there are no bad teams, just bad leaders. And so we take a very proactive effort in growing good leaders and providing them with the support and empowerment to thrive. It's an absolute necessity for the, again, for the success of our department and for our city. What we're going to present tonight is the rank of sergeant, and for the Sanford Police Department sergeant is the first step in official leadership. It's not an easy step. The transition from peer to sergeant happens overnight, yet requires forever more constant attention. Leadership is filled with many challenges. Our leaders must never stop learning, never stop growing intellectually or emotionally, and never stop striving to improve themselves, our team, and our community. Everyone at the police department has and follows seven pillars of leadership that we think is important for you to know and recognize. We strive to meet them daily, and they can be difficult and challenging, and that's part of leadership. They take ownership of their own actions, and they take ownership of the actions of their subordinates, of the people they're, they're in charge of. They have to be humble and check their ego, recognizing no one accomplishes anything by themselves. It's a team effort. They have to self-assess and analyze what we can do better and how to do it better. They have to empower their team members by decentralizing decisions and allowing the junior leaders of our department to lead us forward. Someday, they will be the leaders. We have to listen to others. Everyone accomplishes, everyone contributes to the accomplishment of our mission. We don't listen, then we're not gaining that information that others would have. And we have to explain the why. Knowing the why, so our team members can tell our junior leaders, and our junior leaders understand what and what reasons why we're doing a particular action, or we're striving to accomplish something. And finally, we have to train. We train our team members because learning is a lifelong experience. And when we get to the point where we think we know everything, it's probably a good, it's probably good evidence that we don't know anything. So this, these leadership pillars that I've just talked about is really an investment. When we devote our efforts to achieve those, it's an investment in our people. And the dividend that is paid back to the city for that investment is what we're talking about tonight. This return is measured in the excellent qualities and capabilities possessed by these particular four officers I'm going to invite up here in a moment, and their willingness to accept formal positions of leadership, which in today's age is often difficult. Ensuring a viable succession plan for the future of our, and the, for the future success of our department is also vitally important. If we don't have folks that are willing to step up and, and be in charge, or, or take ownership of problems, then where will we be in two or three or four years? It's our responsibility to make sure that that succession plan is in place for you and for the community members. So I'd like to call forward Officers Colleen Adams, Officer Everett Allen, Officer Matt Beegan, Officer Chris Brown. The city of Sanford and the Sanford Police Department has given special trust and confidence in your integrity, valor, leadership, and professional excellence. In view of these qualities and your dedicated service, you are therefore promoted to the Mayor, is there anything you would like to say?
Well, yes, there is. Are they aware of what I'm going to say? I, I just really like to surprise people. So, we're not going to bring all the families up at once, but we will start with, now, do I call her sergeant now?
Sergeant Adams, yes.
Yes, okay, Sergeant Adams. The three others can take a seat right here. Sergeant Adams, come right up here, and stay right in the front, guys. Sergeant Adams, do you have family or relatives of any kind here?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Well, the ones that are here, would you bring them forward? We would like to have, to take pictures with them.
I can see them.
And are these your parents also?
My children's grandparents.
Your children's grandparents? Excellent. I almost knocked them over in the elevator, so I'm glad they made it up here. The next is Sergeant Allen, and do you just happen to have any relatives here?
I have TV.
Okay, and the poor things, I'm going to call them up front. So if they would come up front to have a picture with you?
Oh, the baby.
Oh, yes, a baby!
Oh, yeah.
All of you, come on up.
Can we keep the baby after up here?
We've been looking at him.
You can do it.
Oh, this is fantastic. Thank you, guys, for coming and to share in this excitement. Take great pictures. Thank you. And Sergeant Begin? And do you just happen to have family here also?
There is.
Come on up.
Huh, you brought a lot of babies.
Oh, excellent. Can you all fit in the picture? And we usually publish these pictures all over town. And Sergeant Brown? And I, I hope you have somebody here also. I will get out and stand with you.
Twins?
Uh, are these twins?
Yeah, right.
Oh, my gosh. You know, and we had a police officer in the back who was trying to make your kids laugh a lot, thinks somebody needs to talk to him.
Is he very large?
So just to close this out, I want to let you know that in the past two years, we've made 12 promotions. And so effectively, that has changed the entire face of our formal leadership at the police department. We believe that you will be as pleased with these new faces as our department is, and, and carry us through for the next whatever. I would like to come off-script for just a, a short period of time, if that's okay? And I'd like to ask one person to come up here to the podium, Katie.
Oh, our new lady in the.
Katie is our new executive assistant to the chief, Katie Cox. She comes to us from the district attorney's office here in York County, and she has been a great help to me, for sure. And so if you need to keep tabs on what I'm doing, she's probably the gal to crack the whip and make sure things are. She's getting closer, I don't know.
It's just a friendly group of people. Well, thank you for bearing with the police chief in coming up.
Good luck.
It is, okay, good luck.
We wish you lots of luck.
And that's all we have.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming, and you don't have to stay for our whole meeting. That was good. Thank you.
If people at home are wondering what we're doing, we're just waiting for the crowd to leave. Thank you, guys, for all coming.
You have to stay. They can leave, you have to stay. Now, I would like to point out that we have Jamie Cole in the audience, who has had multiple job increases, promotions, I guess we could call them. And so somehow, we should embarrass him at some point to have his family come in.
I think you might surprise them.
Surprise him, and.
What a great idea.
Of anybody whose job has changed the most, his, every time we turn around, there's another thing added on to his job. So thank you, Jamie, for all you do, do. Okay, we're going under public participation, and we have Dale, and I believe the last name is Nason, did I get that correct? Come on up to the podium. Please, please introduce yourself, and.
Every time I heard the door open, I was expecting some of my people to show up, but it was just a sea of blue, and I was beginning to get concerned for the city. Was there anybody left?
Where's the rest of the people?
Yes, so Dale Nason, I'm the president of Patriot Riders, Maine Chapter One. We're right here in the town of Sanford. I'm just here to steal just a few couple minutes of your time to say thank you, all right? And I'm saying thank you to the town of Sanford, to the townsfolk of the town of Sanford, and to any of those that are in TV land that can see me, thank you as well. Some of you here on the council probably are aware, Elks 1470, and part of the town brought in the, the wall that heals. It's the three-quarter size Vietnam wall. It's presently waiting to be assembled tomorrow morning across from Walmart. I don't know, you know, some of you are probably old enough to remember the Vietnam War, and some of you aren't old enough, and the, the wall will be nothing more than just names on it. So I was hoping to encourage a few other people, once the wall is assembled, take a moment, go down there, see it. There's people, Vietnam veterans, that will never be able to go to DC. Either they don't want to go, or they don't have the means to go. Having this wall here in this town over the next few days will give these people the opportunity of closure. They can go see, touch the name of their fallen friends or family members. And what must be remembered around every name is that space. And in between, on that space, you can't see it, but there's families, there's friends that were there that lost that person, that supported that family afterwards. So it's important to, to go there, to spend a few minutes. It's, I myself have been to the wall in DC numerous times. I am not a Vietnam vet, but just being there in its presence is quite powerful. And for those that do not know, the Vietnam wall is at a slight V, seven, this replica is seven and a half feet tall in the middle. The order of names are in the order of their sacrifice. And the sacrifice starts at the center, right-hand side, the east wall, at the top, that is your first name. That is the first sacrifice, 1965. And then they go in order of the sacrifice, till you reach the point on the right-hand side. And then the names pick up again on the left point and continue to the center of the wall at the last panel, bringing it to the, to the, to the meeting point, so you have closure of the end of the war. So that's pretty much it. I just wanted to say thank you for everybody to go in. I encourage you all to go down there once it's assembled. There will be people there around the clock. I imagine some of your men in blue will get stuck directing traffic, or I hope at least they do. I hope it's that well-accepted and visited. And that's it. I just want to thank you for bringing it to the town of Sanford.
Thank you.
Dale, thank you for your help in, in bringing this here, and we really appreciate it, being able to share that with our citizens. Now, I think there's probably only two of us up here old enough to remember the Vietnam War, right, Bob? I think the rest of you are a little, even you aren't old enough.
Yeah, but we know people who served.
Yeah, so, so thank you for bringing that to our community.
Thank you.
Pete, did you want to say?
Yes, I'd like to thank you personally. My father-in-law's best friend's on that wall, so thank you for bringing that, and I'm sure he's going to come at nighttime when he's alone to go see that.
To, just, just some knowledge, there's a gentleman that does not live in this town. He lived in Hollis. I call him Brother Jim, Jim Shaddix. He was a Marine. He, he's very big, and his, his story was, if you knew me back then, I was not a nice person. And he's got quite the story to tell. And he's got quite the story to tell. Over the years, he's dealt with a lot of issues in that. When I went to the wall, I asked him if there was a name that he wanted me to rub for him. And he gave me his story. There was Firebase Neville, and then I can't remember the other Firebase. He was on Firebase Neville. And back then, they have the same rules that they have now, can see them gathering up, we can't shoot until they fire upon us. So they could see them gathering up, but they couldn't do anything about it. And the Firebase Neville is on a mountaintop, and they have the big cannons that shoot down into the valleys or to the next mountains. So they can see them building up, like they're going to come up the hill, but they can't fire upon them. So as Brother Jim would say, I have no idea why I was chosen, but I got orders to be pulled off from Firebase Neville. Within 48 hours, Firebase Neville was overrun. And almost to a person, everybody on that base made their sacrifice that day. Two weeks later, they moved him to another Firebase. He wasn't there long. Forty-eight hours, they pulled him out within that 48 hours, that Firebase was overrun. So that man has struggled with, why am I here? He has gone through most of his life feeling that he didn't belong. And I just simply said to him, you were chosen for a reason. Nobody knows, but you were chosen to be here. So when he asked me to do a rubbing, it wasn't a name. There's panels, they're numbered. He wanted a whole panel, Panel 40 West. He wanted all them names. I hung a sheet. Actually, I went to Walmart and got a tablecloth. But that's something else you can do. If you have a name on the wall, you can do a rubbing. So make the trip.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And I think Lee Burnett has his hand up. Lee?
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two items of extreme frustration for me that I want to bring to your attention, one small and one not so small. The first one is erosion on the rail trail that is caused by runoff from city streets. There's runoff from Oak Street that runs down the rail trail for a quarter of a mile into a huge gully, and then drains into a, into a brook. There's also erosion coming off Spartan Drive onto the Mousen Way land, Mousen Way Rail Trail. It's part of why I spoke out at a council meeting back in June. I've brought it to the attention of Matt Hill, Brady Lloyd, the Trails Committee. These are not big problems. It would take a couple of hours, a couple of yards of gravel. These problems can be fixed. Lawrence Furbish and I fixed one gully in a matter of an hour. It almost immediately washed out. It wouldn't take a lot to divert the runoff coming off city streets, but it's extremely frustrating that it's persisted so long. The other frustration related to this is the, the fact that we've gone now three years without any real improvements on the rail trail. The ATV Club put a York rake out there in 2022, that was a mixed blessing. But I was hoping that after the Rail Trail Task Force, after the City Council took a very difficult vote in June, which I applied you for, I think that was very difficult, I was hoping that we were going to get some new attention, new commitment to maintenance. But we've gone another year without any, any work on the rail trail. And I think it just, it breeds disconsent, discontent on all sides. And it's just, it just really upsets me that we can't commit to a standard of maintenance for what should be a crown jewel of the town.
Well, Lee, I'm gonna step in for just a minute, so you can go on to your next, because you only have so many minutes that you can speak. But let me respond, that we could not do anything to the trails until we got the ATVs off. Because every time we would repair the trails, they would go over it and they would destroy it. So we couldn't get grants to repair the trail if they were going to just be immediately destroyed the next season because of the ATVs. So now that that's done, we just finished part of the trail behind, we didn't. A company was hired that came in under a grant and finished by the high school. Once that grant was finished, then we are able to apply for more grants to keep going on the trails. So it was pointless for us to do anything with the trails until we can guarantee that we wouldn't be wasting our money. And, because the state doesn't want to give you money if it's going to then be destroyed. So, but also, we did learn that for the ATV Club, there is also some grants available to them on, for different, not on our trails, but different areas. So if they want to apply for those grants also, they are eligible, but the person who was a part of the grants wouldn't give them any grant money to go on our trails, knowing it was going to ruin them. So that was, we are working on that, Lee. We haven't let it go, and it will, it will be, you'll, you'll see more, you know, in the future. Also, we will put this back to the Trails Committee, the, under the Rec Department, and they will talk about it more, you know, at those meetings. So you might want to tune in and see what they're going to be doing at that meeting. You said in your statement that you had a second thing, so we don't use up the time. What was your, your other thing that you wanted to talk about?
The first thing was the, was the erosion on the rail trail caused by runoff from city streets. That I brought to the attention of the Trails Committee, Public Works, and Brady. It doesn't take a lot. It really should be fixed and addressed so that it doesn't continue to erode.
Yep, got that.
So, yeah, the second thing is I just, we need more investment in the rail trail. Thank you.
All right. Oh, so the whole thing was the rail trail. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so it's good that we still have interest in maintaining that and, and building it. So let's hope we can get some more grants to do that, and when we build our budget next year, maybe help facilitate that. We'll keep that in mind. All right, now, were there any other comments, guys? You all set? All right, so let's move ahead to the public hearings. And I will open the public hearing to receive comments in favor or against a new application submitted by Leaf Labs LLC for Adult Use Cannabis Growers Cultivating License at 72 Emery Street, Unit 301, Sanford, Maine. Any comments for? Any comments against? Okay, moving right along. A public hearing, open a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against a new application submitted by DBA Peter, is it Gable? For a new medical cannabis growers cultivation license at 72 Emery Street, Unit 150, Sanford, Maine. Any comments for? Any comments against? Moving on to our next one. A public hearing to receive comments in favor or against a new liquor license application with malt and, is that Vinus Privileges from Skyview Pitch and Putt, 1569 Main Street, Sanford, Maine? Anyone against or for? The next is a public hearing on an ordinance establishing remedial residential regulations pursuant to recreational vehicles used as temporary living quarters. And gonna, are you going to speak to this, Ian?
I'd like to.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, you're opening the public hearing. I'd like to speak in favor of this. This ordinance was developed in cooperation with the Land Bank Authority. They put this in effect, or proposed putting this in effect, and also reviewed by the Zoning Committee. The purpose of this was that over the winter, there were at least seven instances of people living in trailers throughout the winter, partly caused by the housing crisis that you've already mentioned tonight. The purpose of this ordinance is to put in a defined list, a list of enforceable violations. That's why they're called remedial regulate, remedial residential regulations, because they're not really building regulations. And that's the problem that code enforcement currently faces with them. Typically, they're citing violations, whether they be from the plumbing code or building code in different areas of the code. So it provides seven requirements and timeframes of when the ordinance, excuse me, of when recreational, living on a temporary basis is, is not necessarily legal. Thank you.
Anyone for, which would have been Ian, I think. Anyone against? You can come up and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Shakir Elshabaz. I, I don't understand, I want to get a clear understanding on this recreation there. Were you talking about motorhomes, or people living in their cars and trucks, or?
Some people have, like a camper in their yard.
Right.
And part of the problem is like the sewage from it, and that, so we don't, I think it's basically, and Ian, if, you might have to correct me, that people who have those types of vehicles, we don't want them in their yards. And the other problem is they're parking them in front of other people's houses. And so we, unless we put an ordinance in place, we can't do anything about it. So if somebody wanted to park in front of your house, they could.
No, I, I agree with that. I was thinking you were talking about banning people sleeping in their cars who are homeless and so forth like that. That's what my argument was.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm for that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. A public hearing, I'm opening a public hearing on ordinance establishing a shelter license standards and fee. Ian, are you going to speak to this one also?
Yes. Yes, Ian Howsey, I'm the Director of Community Development. So this ordinance started as a, an emergency ordinance at the request of the City Council. The, the Public Safety Committee recently reviewed this as well, and requested some additional changes. Those changes were made under Section 155-9. And then also requested that these only apply to new shelters. And those changes were also made before this public hearing. And then I would also say that I did provide this, the amended changes to both Caring Unlimited and also York County Shelter Program for, directly. And they were supportive of those changes in the licensing. And so it's, it's a, it's a, it establishes a shelter license, standards and fee associated with shelters, very much to what Steve was talking about earlier regarding emergency shelters and operations in the city, stemming from the shelter situation that took place with the asylum seekers earlier this summer and into the fall. And I can leave my comments there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone to speak against? Okay, moving right along. A public hearing on amendments to Chapter 149 Licensing and Chapter 128 Fire Prevention pursuant to elimination of the Office of the Fire Marshal effective June 30th, 2023. And this is, we had some temporary things in place, and Steve has worked very hard with his staff to come up with this and to fill in all the places that were wrong in those areas that needed to have been corrected, rather, including, how many times did it say town? And now we are a city. So even that had to have been changed in all these different chapters. So is there anybody to speak for this? Anyone against? Okay, we can move right along. And you will see, in case people are wondering, some of these things reappear later on in the agenda, and it's the time this is for the public to speak to. Later on, it'll be for us to speak to the issue. All right, the consent agenda. Can we just group this all together? Do I have any objections to doing that? If I see none, then I move to approve the request in the consent agenda. Do we do it for favor? No?
Nope. No objections.
No objection? Okay, we are set. Let's move on. Old business. In order to approve the proposed zone changes for parcel K 32-24-1 Park Street, oh, excuse me, 1 Park Street, this item must be read on two occasions. This is the second reading. So if you remember this from before, we had it there, two houses on Main Street that the person owns, and then the one behind for the zoning. So do I have any questions?
No. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the zone change for parcel K 32 24 1 Park Street.
All right, do I, was that you, Bob?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. 100%. Under new business, in order to authorize the mayor to provide a letter of support on behalf of the Sanford City Council for the Sanford Housing Authority application to convert its low-income public housing units to a housing choice voucher subsidy program via the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Developments, streamline voluntarily conversion, reposition, is that repositioning option? All right, and I think we have, is it Plummer Potter going to present?
Plummer.
All right. Thank you for having me. So I am Plummer Potter. I'm the Project Director of Sanford Housing Authority. Today's presentation is going to be brief about the Sanford Housing Authority makeup, the federal programs that we operate, and what we're looking to do with streamlined voluntary conversion. Brief overview of the Housing Authority, our governance, what is streamlined voluntary conversion, an overview of our public housing program, a brief comparison of public housing versus the housing choice voucher programs, and the impact of streamlined voluntary conversion on our residents, the Housing Authority, and the city. And lastly, some testimonials. So Sanford Housing Authority's mission statements provide safe, quality, and affordable housing for eligible populations in need of assistance, and to promote opportunities for growth and development of residents, as well as our community. The governance of Sanford Housing Authority. Sometimes the Housing Authority is incorrectly thought to be a local office of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, or part of the city of Sanford. The Housing Authority is neither. We are an independent public agency. We're governed by seven board members who are appointed by the City Council. This is a brief overview of our portfolio. We manage, as I stated, a housing choice voucher program, which contains 598 vouchers that were eligible to give to eligible applicants. We also have several elderly buildings, including Village View, The Maples, and Mayflower Place, two duplexes on Prescott Street in Tangway, a single-family home on Howard Street. And lastly, the, the reason why I'm here today presenting to you is our low-income public housing program, which consists of Sunset Towers and Eastside Acres. So streamlined voluntary conversion, this is the formal definition, which refers to our ability to voluntarily decide to remove our public housing units from our public housing annual contributions contract. Basically, families residing in these units will receive tenant-based vouchers. So what does this all mean? First, I want to give you an overview of our public housing program, so everyone can understand the properties that would be impacted by this. understand the properties that would be impacted by this. We have Eastside Acres, which is located on Yale, Bates, Bowden, and Harvard Street. It consists of 49 apartments in nine buildings. We have two, three, and four-bedroom units. Everyone at these properties currently pay 30% of their gross income towards their rent. We also have Sunset Towers, located on Main Street. It consists of 72 apartments that are primarily for elderly and disabled individuals. Here, they also pay 30% of their gross income towards their rent. So in order to give a better idea of what would be happening, I wanted to give a comparison of public housing and housing choice vouchers. So public housing was established for low-income families and individuals, as well was housing choice voucher. In the public housing program, tenants pay 30% of their gross income towards their rent, and the same applies for the housing choice voucher program. Public housing funding is provided by HUD in the form of operating subsidy and capital fund grants. For the housing choice voucher program, funding is provided through housing assistance payments and administrative fees. Operating subsidy is awarded annually. It's based on the cost of utilities and inflation. Funding available is determined by Congress annually. For the housing choice voucher program, funding is also determined by Congress. Historically, it's based on prior year activity. The capital fund grants are awarded annually for public housing. They are primarily designed to fund modernization of the properties, and the funding is determined annually by Congress. Administrative fees are paid to the agency based on annually established fees determined by Congress. We currently have 120 units of public housing in our public housing portfolio, Eastside Acres and Sunset Towers, whereas we have 598 housing choice vouchers. And now, the main differences of the programs. In public housing, the income limits start at $54,000 for a one-person family. For the housing choice voucher program, income limits start at $33,800. Residents in public housing can stay if they're over income. They pay a flat rent capped at 80% of fair market rents established by HUD. Whereas the HCV program is designed for participants to graduate, and once they are over the income limit, they are no longer eligible for assistance. To give a comparison of the income limits of the two programs, I wanted to lay out what a one-person family looks like versus an eight-person family. And as you can see, the difference is quite a bit from looking at a single person in the public housing program versus the housing choice voucher program, roughly $20,000. It grows as the families grow. So in order to give a better idea of the impact on streamlined voluntary conversion, I wanted to give a couple of examples. So for the tenants who currently qualify for tenant-based assistance, meaning that they will be within the income limits of the HCV program, we currently have 103 of 120 current residents who would be eligible for this assistance. The tenant portion of rent will remain at 30% of income. At the tenant's discretion, they will have the option to stay in their current unit or to relocate with their voucher. Tenants will be offered the ability to convert their tenant-based assistance to project-based assistance. If they choose this, a voucher will remain attached to the unit even after the resident leaves. After the first year, a tenant may request to move with continued assistance. For those who do not qualify for tenant-based assistance, 17 of 120 current residents would not be eligible for tenant-based assistance as they are over the income limits. Tenants who exceed these limits will be permitted to remain in their unit for one year with rent at the current payment standard. After one year, they will be required to relocate. For those who wish to relocate, once we give them the option, Sanford Housing will work closely with individuals and families who wish to relocate. Sanford Housing will be assisting with moving costs and tenant security deposits if tenants relocate within the qualified time period. Now I'm going to go over a couple of different scenarios, just to give an idea of the different situations that the agency is expecting to encounter. So Resident One here is going to stay in place and they are going to elect to have tenant-based assistance. So their annual gross income doesn't exceed the limits for the housing choice voucher program. They would be awarded tenant-based assistance. They would remain in their unit, and their rent amount is not affected. If they elect to move in the future, their voucher remains with them and they can seek alternative housing. Scenario Two is a resident who decides to stay in place and to convert their tenant-based assistance to project-based assistance. Again, their annual gross income doesn't exceed the limits of the program. They are initially awarded tenant-based assistance, but they can voluntarily elect to convert their voucher to project-based. They'll remain in their unit and their rent amount will not be affected. If they elect to move in the future, the voucher will remain with Sanford Housing Authority in that unit. The tenant will be awarded a tenant-based voucher if they qualify and if there's one available. They can then take that voucher to the open market. Scenario Three is a tenant who wishes to move with their tenant-based assistance. Again, they meet the income limits. They would be awarded a tenant-based assistance. The tenant informs the Housing Authority that they wish to move. They are free to search the open market for an acceptable unit. The Housing Authority will assist with reasonable moving costs. In addition, we will seek placement in some of our non-public housing units if available. Their existing unit will be leased to someone who qualifies for a housing choice voucher program, keeping it affordable. Scenario Four is someone who is over income and they elect to stay in their unit. So their annual gross income would exceed the housing choice voucher program thresholds. The tenant has the option to stay in their unit for up to one year, paying the payment standard, which is also fair market rent. After one year, the tenant will be required to find alternative housing. Their existing unit will be leased to someone who qualifies for the housing choice voucher program after they depart. And lastly, scenario five is that they are over income and they are moving. Their annual gross income exceeds the limits of the program. The tenant elects to move from their unit. Sanford Housing will assist with reasonable moving costs, and we will also seek placement into some of our other housing if they do qualify. And their existing unit will be leased to someone who qualifies for the housing choice voucher program. Now is the impact on the Housing Authority itself. So repositioning would convert public housing units to housing choice voucher, to the housing choice voucher program, as I stated. The conversion will result in the Housing Authority's opportunity to leverage private debt and equity in order to reinvest in Sunset Towers and Eastside Acres. We will see increased reimbursement rates from HUD. We'll have reduced reliance on annual appropriations that can be unreliable. The housing choice voucher program overall is considered less complex than the low-income public housing program from an operational perspective. We would think that we would see increased efficiencies as an organization by making the switch. The impact on the city of Sanford. The Housing Authority will continue to be an affordable agency. There'll be no decrease in the affordable housing units. Sunset Towers and Eastside Acres will continue to be for elderly, disabled individuals and families who qualify based upon income and assets. The city would have input on evaluating the market and altering the future needs of the properties, whether that be elderly, disabled, family, workforce, et cetera. If a tenant vacates, any new tenant will be selected off the Authority's waitlist that's been established for years. Tenants who qualify will continue to pay 30% of their income. The Housing Authority hopes to continue to pay the pilot to the city of Sanford annually and will have potential revitalization of outdated property. For context, Eastside Acres and Sunset Towers were built in the early 1970s. The relationship between the city of Sanford and the Housing Authority. As mentioned prior, the Housing Authority is an independent public agency that was first established by the city because of the need for affordable housing. The city appoints seven board members of Sanford Housing Authority. There is also a cooperation agreement between the city of Sanford and the Sanford Housing Authority that requires Sanford Housing Authority to pay annual payments in lieu of tax, also known as pilot, to the city of Sanford in the amount of 10% of tenant rents. Below is how this is calculated, which is our annual tenant rents, we deduct the cost of utilities that the Housing Authority pays for Eastside Acres and Sunset Towers, and ultimately, we pay 10% of the net. This is a brief slide on the real estate taxes and pilot that the Sanford Housing Authority pays to the city annually. These are based on the most recent payments, which totals $178,389 and 12 cents. So the mission of this presentation is to formalize and memorialize a cooperation or pilot agreement between the city of Sanford and the Sanford Housing Authority. And we seek the City Council's approval to get a letter of recommendation that we move forward streamlined voluntary conversion and that the city is in agreement that this would be a good thing for all.
Thank you. Any questions?
There's a timeline.
This is just a brief timeline of where we would be going with this. We are basically seeking the city approval, which, if we were to receive that, we would move that on to our Board of Commissioners, and then we would ultimately submit to HUD for final approval. HUD takes about 60 to 90 days to approve, and we would be looking at roughly between March 2024 and June 2024 to close out our public housing program. In between all of this, there would be former resident meetings, consultations, going over the different scenarios, and assisting in any way that we can for anyone that wishes to relocate or has questions. And just for a last slide, many agencies, housing authorities in the southern Maine area have gone through a very similar process, and the feedback has been positive throughout. Some housing authorities have revitalized, you know, similar housing stock that was built in the 60s and 70s and have been able to modernize it to today's standards. Think we have any questions?
Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Jonathan?
Yes, thank you. Quick question. So a few slides back, it looked like someone that was, or would now be, over the limit for income.
Yes.
Their rent would go from whatever it was to market value for that year. Is that correct?
That is correct. When I do say fair market, fair market is based on what HUD posts on an annual basis. So it may not be, you know, there's limits to it. For instance, an efficiency unit that makes up about half of Sunset Towers would be $1,154. A one-bedroom would be $1,217. With the highest of what we have in our stock is a four-bedroom for $2,207.
And relatively, what are those going for now as far as current rent?
So currently, most of our residents pay 30% of their income. So, which is about, I believe it was 85%. So the 15 residents or 15%, maybe it's 17, now that I'm thinking about it, 17 would technically be over income. And I'd have to look to see, because we have Sunset Towers and Eastside Acres. Sunset Towers is made up of efficiency units and one-bedrooms. Eastside Acres is two to four bedrooms.
So my concern is that you have people that are currently paying 30%, whatever that number is.
Yep.
They suddenly find themselves over income by whatever amount, and then their rent also jumps up to whatever market value is, which we all know is pretty crazy right now. So then they're forced to leave immediately because they can't afford their current rent because it's basically jumped up significantly. So that's my concern with this. I don't know if you can, have any comments or data around that you could share?
Diane, do you have?
Hi, Diane Small, Executive Director of the Housing Authority. I think what you're asking is they're going to jump to market, and it's not going to go to market rent. It'll go to our payment standard. So 30% of their income typically, they would be able to afford that, our payment standard. It won't go to like $5,000.
Okay, so it would just go up? It'd be at the 30% still?
Right. It would be at, so...
Do you have an example maybe you could share?
What's that?
Do you have an example?
We do. We can send you one, which might make it easier. So if the rent's $1,000 that we get, and a tenant typically pays 30% of their income towards that.
Yep.
Now that over-income tenant pays the full amount because they don't qualify for the subsidy.
Right, but I'm concerned that they won't be able to afford that, it's a full amount.
They would, based on their income. If you do the math, for somebody who makes $54,000, they can afford that. It's 30% of their income.
So this kind of protects them so that, how it is now, if you are now making too much money, you are just out?
Well, for public housing, you can, part of the reason we want to be affordable housing is to help the most in need. So right now, we have people who are significantly over income, like double the amount over.
Uh huh.
And we can't really move them along for three full years, right? So it takes up a unit of somebody who needs that unit. So it's not really, do you understand what I'm saying? So that unit is now not affordable for somebody who could use that subsidy.
Okay.
So as you and I have discussed, like, one-bedrooms right now are what, $1,300, $1,400 on the open market. Currently, the rents we set last year shows us at what, $1,100 for a one-bedroom? So it is lower than what landlords are attempting to really skyrocket the rents to. It is lower than that. It always has been. It's always a little bit more reasonable, but with the cost of everything that you have for rents, it's not unusual.
That's everything included as well. So that's heat, lights, that's everything.
Right, it has to include everything, which is very different from, I mean, when you include all of that, $1,100 for a one-bedroom is actually very fair.
Yeah.
For all the costs that are associated with it, so.
Also, from running the numbers too, I mean, we're not looking, these people, the 17 that are over income, they wouldn't be looking at like a $1,000 increase or anything like that. We're talking like, you know, $100 to $200. And that's just based on the way the public housing program's designed and the fact that, you know, the folks can stay in, basically, whereas the HCV program is more so designed to graduate once you get over that income level.
We do have other property that's 50 to 60% based on income. So if we have openings, we can then move people over to those programs as well.
Okay, and the tax incentive, whatever that, I forgot the term you guys used, but that number, how does this affect the amount of basically tax money that Sanford would get from this change?
Ultimately, it would remain the same or increase because technically, we'd be getting more tenant rents, at least at first, until it was converted over to the housing choice voucher program. But it would remain pretty stable compared to the number that you saw right now. I mean, it will increase as fair market rents go up, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Nate?
Thank you for the presentation. It was clear and easy to understand. Two questions, one's relatively quick. If someone's income goes over the threshold when this new program's in place, as right now, we have a one-year, once it's in place, you have a year from now, what happens when somebody's income crosses that threshold if we have that program? How much time leeway do they have before they have to relocate?
In the new program, it's six months.
Six months, okay. And I guess the next question is for them and for the ones that have a year. Obviously, we in Sanford have a housing crisis. It's difficult to place people, and these people have just crossed that threshold into needing, you know, your assistance. Is there resources that your organization can point them to, to help them find a place that's, because like we mentioned, you know, this increase isn't going to be the fair market value per se, it's based off of the income, but after that year, they go out essentially into the wild. And those rates probably will go up $500, $600 a month for them. Again, they'll have some time, but can you talk about some of the resources that you have, maybe not to fund it, but maybe to help guide them in the right direction?
Yeah, we have over 500 landlords that we work with and a network. So if somebody moves out of the HCV program, they'll keep people housed too. So they can move from our properties to their properties, kind of like a flow of tenants back and forth. So there's a little bit of a safety net there. And also, we start working with York County Community Action on... Community Action on savings programs. They have an account where if they put a dollar in, your County Community Action is able to fund it, $2 as well. They double the amount. So, we start talking to them before they over-income out of the program. So, it's a lot of planning, but that happens now with people too, that they end up paying, they graduate off the program. So, you have to start making a plan as well. So, we would continue with that process.
Thank you for that. I just, you know, just your County Community Action, I've, in my work with the Sewage District, I know they help out with utilities and things like that. So, that is something I forgot about till just now. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Ann?
Well, and Counselor Hitchcock really hit on it. For me, and I first want to say, I believe that you're bringing this to us because it's the right thing to do for the agency, and that's important. My concern is for those 17 families who won't be eligible in a year, and I have faith that we'll do whatever we can to make sure they're placed. That's my biggest concern, is will we have in early 2024, 17 homeless families? It'd have been a long time.
Oh, gosh, no.
See, it's for residents, so lots of things are happening to make sure that doesn't happen.
Not what we do. We don't make people homeless. We work with people to make sure they remain housed.
And housing navigators will step in and all of those good things.
Yeah. We'll figure, we'll figure that out. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But technically, they have a year.
Okay.
But obviously, you know, we have to work with people.
Thank you.
More?
One of the things I love about it is the ability to leverage monies to do improvements, because both of the buildings, all the buildings we know are antiquated, and they could use a refreshing, modernized look. I've been in some of the units, you know.
Yeah.
What did they do? 12 by 12 tiles that, you know, it would be nice to be able to put some, some different type of flooring down, just to give it that, to freshen it up a bit.
Yeah.
I understand you wouldn't want to put carpet. That would just continually go bad. But you could, you know, it's, there are things that could be done to make them nicer and to do some tweaking and fix it up, and if they can leverage some resources in this program better than they can in the old program.
Right.
I'd like to explain that with the capital fund that we get for improvements for both Eastside Acre and Sunset Tower. It's not plural, by the way. There's only one tower. So, it's a tower. That, last year, we got $379,000. That's for both buildings, and our elevators cost over $750,000 to fix. So, you can see that we don't have enough money to really continually upgrade those buildings, and this will allow us to do that. We can leverage the funding.
It's time. They're all older. It's definitely time. I know what I spend keeping up my buildings, so.
Pete?
Yeah, Diane, thank you for everything you're doing for the city. I know that you brought it up to us because it's for the good of everybody. And the whole idea is to, to help people out, and then not make them uncomfortable, but to help them, help themselves and move on, correct? Is that?
Well, the goal is to always get people to graduate from the program so that they can move on and hear from them. And then someone else can then use that subsidy as well, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can I have a motion then? Whoop, sorry, Steve.
So, looking at the income limits, under, under public housing, you can make up to $54,050 as an individual, and being the public housing unit. Under the Housing Choice Voucher, you can make $33,800, right? So, that means somebody that's making $16.25 an hour, if they're making more than that, they don't qualify for a Housing Choice Voucher, correct?
They make more than 33, for one, for a single person.
Yep. That's $16.25 an hour.
Yep. That's set by HUD.
If they're making $17, they're out.
Well, they're not. If they get to that point, then they have the six months. They don't qualify if they're, they wouldn't qualify if they were already at that.
Right. Or is it $54,000? That's $25.98 an hour.
Correct. It's a pretty big gap.
And then the 49 apartments that you have now at Eastside Acres, those get converted to Housing Choice, so just, it gives you an additional 49 vouchers at that point in time?
Yep. We'll get, well, our Faircloth, when the agency was first developed, there were 132 public housing units. And then through, at Sunset Tower, they made some of the efficiencies into one-bedrooms. So, now we have 122 units, and we enkinded out two units for special use.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And Steve, did you have a concern about this, or you all said?
I'm just comparing the income levels that somebody qualifies for on the Housing Choice Voucher.
It is significant, yeah. All right. Could I have a motion, please? Pete?
Motion to go forward.
Can I have a second? Ann?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor? And that's...
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I can answer Nathan's question about Lehman's Way. It's going to be both. Yeah.
Okay, in order to sign the municipal warrant calling for a municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, I think we probably need a motion for this.
Pete?
I'll motion to go forward with this to November 7th on Tuesday.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a second? Jonathan?
Second.
All right. And all those in favor? Thank you. I figured I didn't need discussion.
It is what it is.
All right, moving right along. In order to accept the resignation of Dr. William Frank from the position of local health officer effective September 21st, 2023, and we had a letter from him, and it said, "I am submitting my resignation as city health officer. At this time, I have too many commitments to adequately provide this service to Sanford. It has been my pleasure to serve in this capacity. I will continue to provide coverage for 30 days so that you may find my replacement, respectively, Dr. William Frank." All right. So, do I have a motion to accept his, Maura?
I'll make a motion to accept with regret, because he does turn his stipend back to the city, right?
Yes. All right, a second. Pete?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor? All right. Well, I would like to really refuse it, because now he's going to give him more free time. He is my neighbor, and so, well, thank you. And let's see, the next. Huh, ordain, an ordinance establishing remedial residential regulations for recreational vehicles used as temporary living quarters. And, oh, he already left. So, this must be read on two separate occasions. This is the first reading. And Ann, go ahead.
You've already heard my comments, and this will go before the zoning committee next week, just as normal practice between the first reading and second reading, if there's any additional comments or concerns you want to raise.
Did anyone have any comments or concerns? Ann?
I was wondering if the zoning, if somebody from zoning could comment on the discussion around the limitation between April 15 and November 1. The reason that I ask is that if I have a family member that's unhoused as I head into winter, but I happen to have a well-insulated, sorry, recreational vehicle, and I have, I meet the setback requirements, and I have a plan for sewage and so forth, it seems like it would be a good possible solution in a terrible situation. So, I'm just curious what the conversation was around that, if any was had.
I think a lot of the conversation was about the safety of the majority of them in the middle of winter for heating and electrical. And Jamie might be able to comment further about what he's seen, and the most of them being not actually able to be winter housing, and whether allowance, maybe you could comment about maybe whether allowances should be made for that type of circumstance, but typically, that doesn't exist. Typically, they're actually not adequate, and they're doing some fairly unsafe things in order to keep them warm in the winter, so.
So, yeah, the conversation has been based upon, even the campers, the travel trailers, the RVs that have the Arctic packages, they're not meant for four months of sustained living in cold weather. They're meant, you're at a campground that gets 20 degrees, 15 degrees on Columbus Day weekend or something. It doesn't freeze you out on Columbus Day weekend. They're not really built or designed for sustained cold weather. You, as Ian mentioned earlier, we created this ordinance as an attempt to give us more enforcement mechanisms. So, we had a few campers last year. They have tarps over the roofs. They have foamboard insulation stuffed up in every nook and cranny. It's not safe. It's a fire hazard. It's a nuisance to the neighbors. It's, so during the subcommittee meetings, it's really been, these aren't designed for winter living. They're designed for fair-weather living arrangements. And with, I agree, as a camper, maybe a better solution than a tent in the woods, sure. But we don't necessarily want to get in the business of allowing unsafe conditions. And if we allow an ordinance that allows people to live in travel trailers during the winter, we could potentially be in allowing unsafe conditions.
So, just a follow-up question, kind of related. When I reviewed the proposal of April 15th to November 1, but the limitation of 120 days, was it just conversation around not actually wanting to be used that entire period consecutively? You know, why not allow the use in that timeframe? What, I was wondering about the limit or the conversation around the limit to 120 days?
I think we were thinking a lot about the limits of when people typically come up to visit and stay with family during the summertime, and most are gone within four months. I mean, I don't think a lot of people stay for that entire length. Obviously, with the situation we currently have, some people may be doing it longer. And then that's, that one probably is one of the ones we discussed a fair amount, is, you know, how long should people be able to live in them? Because we don't really want to set up motor homes as permanent housing options. I mean, we would rather encourage ADUs safer, you know, build something that's a lot safer, that has the appropriate heating, the appropriate electrical, the appropriate water and sewer for people to actually be living in. So, it's really a discouragement of making motor homes of a permanent living abode on other people's property, because, I mean, we've seen, you know, some sitting right in the front yard. Obviously, the setbacks are important. I don't think anybody disagrees with setbacks. But you have them sitting on the front lawns, and, you know, there's just bad situations. I just talked to someone who's allowing someone to, you know, grab electric from them, and I'm just shaking my head going into the house, because we know that that's not safe, just jacking into their electrical. They don't tend to know if there's enough electric to house both of them. You could have a fire occur. So, I think that was really what we were thinking. We see this a ton, but usually, it's someone who takes off for the winter. They come up for the summer, and they are on someone's property, and that's normal around here. What we're seeing now is abnormal and unsafe circumstances that we're trying to allow our codes enforcement office to walk into and seek a betterment of the situation that they're seeing. I think that's what it was all about, not to really punish people, just to better the situation. And if you guys think it should be for the entire length of time, that's a conversation that we are definitely willing to have at the subcommittee.
So, this came out of these seven, seven situations that we were seeing throughout the winter, and it was pretty clear that these people didn't have another option. So, the question was, how long, how long, you know, do you give them to leave? So, that was, 120 days was the amount of time. We saw that we'd get them through the end of the winter and say, you know, at that point, you need to, you need to be done.
Except we're not allowing the winter use with this ordinance, so that wouldn't apply per se.
It's both. So, it's, it's, it's 120 days and also between those dates.
I guess I'd ask that the subcommittee just chat about that 120 days in light of our community members living outside their unhoused. I'm in full agreement with the rest of the proposed ordinance in terms of setbacks and so forth, and the sewer, I mean, I think it's well done, but I'm just trying to think about our unhoused. I like the 120 days if it's my in-laws staying at my house, you know, like a clear cutoff date.
So, if it were to extend itself, like, I don't know if Jamie has any commentary on what, what more permanent setup of a property should have in order to have a much lengthier stay? Should we be requiring them to do more with the water, the sewer, the electric setup? So, it's a good setup if they're going to allow for long-term, longer-term use. I don't know. As we discuss it, we can discuss it at subcommittee, too.
Sure. When we talk longer term, we're becoming an ADU. Accessory Dwelling Units ADU is going to be a term that's going to be talked about a whole lot more. We are actively working on ordinance provisions for LD 2003, in that provision is requirements to allow more ADUs than we might already. So, this ordinance provisions will be coming to you guys hopefully by the end of the year. We are actively working on them as we speak. So, sure, when we talk, the 120 days was an arbitrary number. Just, we, we all said we don't necessarily want it for six months. We don't want it for a year. What's a good number? The 120 days was, you've got to realize Sanford has some very large lots, and Sanford has some very small lots. So, this could be a camper 10 feet from the neighbor's bedroom window. And how long does that neighbor really want to deal with having a family 10 feet from their living room, bathroom, bedroom, whatever window?
Especially with a generator going all the time.
So, it was really just trying to find that good balance of providing the temporary housing options that people need, and not becoming a hindrance to the neighbors, not becoming unsafe situation by, even, even all campers are powered with an extension cord. Extension cords aren't made for forever use. The longer something like that's used, the more likelihood something bad's going to happen. So, really, it was just trying to find that magic number to help. Everybody has a friend or a family member that falls on rough times, and we want to help. But we also have to think about the butters and the big picture as well.
Pete?
And originally, I'm one of the ones that asked to look into campers on lots. Let's use my land. We've got five acres, last road in Sanford. Little intrusive not to be able to hook up my camper, who just sold a $40,000 camper, the fireplace furnace in there, and it was a sport track. Again, it's not for January and February. So, what originally I asked was to look at how we could do this and not be like an intrusive government on, like, my five acres out, which would not bother a neighbor. Under the old rules, they really could come down and say, "I unhooked that. That's not going." And that would do no service to the City of Sanford and all the snowbirds that come down for the summer. We want to be able to have that, and with a housing crisis, we figured this would work with good campers and things, and they come up with some really good stuff. So, there was 120 days, so it wasn't like you're always having somebody in that campsite on your land, because you're not a campground. This is more to allow you use of your land. Now, they're going to get setbacks, because it affects everybody's land. So, this was more as a courteous to the Sanford taxpayers and their property, so they could, we could allow this.
Given that, Pete, so, we said, obviously, not from November 1st through April 15th.
Correct.
The warm issue.
Yep.
So, if the camper arrives on April 15th, how do you feel about that camper staying till November 1st? I mean, because that's, we limited it to just...
So, I like the 120 days. They could redo something if they had to, because we're not setting up six months of temporary housing. We're allowing property owners to allow people to use their camper if they come visit or if they stay for 120 days. If we go six months, I would want input from all the departments on any pitfalls, pros or cons, if we do straight six months. And I'm open to it if it's good, if you guys are all for this. I have no study on that. The whole idea was, again, not to be intrusive on our taxpayers' lands if they have the property to allow a camper to be sit there for housing for temporary, which 120 days does fall under temporary. I don't know what six months falls under, so we would have to look at that.
If we went to 180 days, it would take care of the entire, almost the entire period.
I'd be open for that if you guys are, but I'd rather, I want feedback from the experts.
I would say give staff a little bit more time to do some research, and we'll talk about it at the subcommittee.
Yeah.
All right.
I have one last thing, if I might, and it looks like Steve has something as well. Is that okay, Mayor?
Yes.
So, just to confirm I understand this, this is for a recreational vehicle that's being used as temporary living quarters. So, if, for example, I move my motor home, what'd you call it? It sounded nicer than my house.
Just a camper, recreation.
If I move Pete's camper, or I buy Pete's camper, move it to my lot, but I'm not living in it, none of this applies?
No.
The setbacks don't apply. I can park it in my front yard, all of that good stuff.
Some zones say you can't park cars in your front yard. So, regular zone, what pro?
Address some of that, okay.
Depends on your zone for parking your extra vehicles.
Do you have some plans?
One of the stories I had told, I think I told it at the agenda meeting, is I watched when I was on a bike ride. I'm going up back road, and I watched the... when I was on a bike ride, I'm going up back road and I watched this trailer go by me with a big motor home behind it, pretty bad, like old. I'm going along, going along, and I get into Shapley. I just want to make sure you all know it's Shapley. And right next to the CMP right away, the trailer had, the tow truck had pulled aside and was disconnecting said trailer. And I looked into the woods next to it and there was a gentleman in a tent and there was a woman managing the disconnect with the truck, with the tow person. And they cleared an area of what I consider future mud. And I just, I just shook my head because you know, getting that out of there in the future as it sinks in and, I mean, it's Shapley's problem, not our problem. But it just, there are some things that people are doing that are desperate. And, you know, we have that motor home that's currently parked in Eastside Acres, actually. That's, I mean, she keeps going in and out of her apartment into this motor home. I don't know what the situation is, but I've watched it daily and it's just odd. I don't know what's happening there, but Diane's not here anymore. Oh, wait, she is. But anyway, so there's some tough situations out there.
So this was the first reading. So if it goes back to the subcommittee and they come up with one hundred and eighty days, does that go to a first reading again? Or that would be the second reading? Okay. Sounds like a good deal.
Thank you, Jamie.
Ian, one second.
No, I think it depends on how many, how many changes there are. I mean, in my mind, one hundred and twenty days is, is temporary. You know, maybe, maybe once you're getting to one hundred and twenty, one hundred and eighty days, you're talking about more permanent. But we should talk about it with the subcommittee.
Subcommittee, good.
Steve has a comment.
All right, Steve has a comment, too.
Mayor, can I make a point of order just before you go on to Steve? But I think your last response, what you were talking about, I think if we make substantial changes to the ordinance in subcommittee, then it might go back to first reading if it's.
But if it's just the one hundred and eighty days.
If it's just the one hundred and eighty days, then that's just a easy revision. Am I speaking correctly here? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I would concur with that. My, my continued concern around this entire consideration is the sewage disposal plan. All right? So it gets into the one hundred and twenty days plus, it gets into the, the weather duration early April versus November, what happens with the plumbing in here. And I'm specifically talking about the waste disposal plan. It has to be approved within forty-eight hours of placement. What that sewage disposal plan, which has to be approved by the local plumbing inspector, what that plan looks like? Is somebody coming to your house, coming to this location every four-plus days to pump this trailer out? Right? Well, but you can't, you can't hook to a leach field without it being properly sized. It'd have to be hooked to a public, so there's a lot of concern. And that's, I, not speaking for codes, but I suspect in your inspection of some of these inappropriately placed trailers, that's a, a huge concern is the sewage just flowing out on the ground.
Yeah, it'd require a hookup, like, like have a plumber hook up as a sign off and electrician for the panel. Because you can't just put an extension cord and it'll blow up, you know, if you're going to cause damage. So I would like to look at, if we could, requiring a sign off from you guys that the electrical panel and there's a place for gray and gray water and sewage hookup. I think that would, that would nail that. That would have to be a requirement.
Jason?
So the sewer, the sewer question has been the biggest discussion, in my opinion, throughout this whole thing. It's not as simply as hooking it up. If it's on a septic, you have to get your septic redesigned and enlarged to take your extra load. We're doing this as a temporary start measure to, to help people. You're not going to help people if you have to spend fifteen grand to replace your septic system.
Maybe hire, require a pump, you have to pump.
So that's what, that's what Steve said. And again, this goes back to the temporary basis. It's reasonable to expect somebody to have the septic company come and pump it out every three or four, six days, depending on how much you're using it for a short period of time. But that's going to get very expensive and very old rapidly. So it's something, the first, first month, they'll call once a week and have it done. And then we'll drive by and we'll see a slow drip coming out of that pipe and it's because they're sick of paying a hundred bucks every three days to get it pumped. So these all are factors in trying to balance that fine line of, of we're helping the citizens of Sanford, but we're, we're not doing a public nuisance in the process.
Because I wasn't at the subcommittee conversations, are honeypots allowable? That can then be brought to local campgrounds for disposal, proper disposal?
So that, that was discussed, that is an option. But in reality, how many people are going to want to do that every two or three days? Again, for a week, everybody would do it. For, for six months, it's going to get old.
Jonathan?
Well, let's not forget that some, at least some percentage of people that are doing this would just be using the indoor facilities at the house they're right next to. So if there are relatives that are staying, they'll have free access to the house and can just walk out, out of the camper. And probably most of them are just using it for sleeping, would be my guess. So just something to keep in mind.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. It's moving on. An ordinance establishing a shelter license standards and fee. This must be also read on two occasions. This is the first reading, and I believe we had a whole handout for that also. So go ahead, Ian.
You heard my comments the first time. Again, this will go back to the Public Safety Committee next Tuesday. If you have any further comments now, and the committee can take a look at them then, as is normal, before we go back to a second reading.
I guess I just had a question of the committee members. He mentioned in the presentation that there were shelters that, existing shelters that you didn't want to have to meet, able to meet, have to meet these standards. Are there some that wouldn't be able to meet the standards? Is that, was that one of the concerns?
It was more around the headache of having to jump through the hoops of all of the standards, the public, you know, hearing piece of it.
Okay.
So because they've already been in place, just the ease to let them continue operations.
But they're still meeting the standards of the housing piece?
Yes.
Like they have to still be inspected for the safety of the housing?
Yep.
So what I did when I revised it was I sorted, there's two sections. One, one talks about the licensing application requirements and then one talks about the standard operating procedures. So the existing shelters have to have the standard operating procedures in place, but they don't have to put the license application together. So the license application was more explaining what they're going to do and it's more perspective about what, how they're going to operate, who they're going to serve, what, where the money's going to come from, their experience and, and then also the standard operating procedures. And then the standard operating procedures are right from the, from the, the, the E-HAS, excuse me, the E-HASP program, E-SAP program about, talking about how they do intake procedures and their codes of conduct, their sanitation plan, their facility plan, stuff that they just want to have usually. You put it in a binder and say, this is, this is how we operate. And so anybody knows if there's an emergency, who they contact. So I went through and sorted the two sections to make sure that those are things that would go in that binder versus those are things that they'd be making an application for.
Ian? And this isn't necessarily related to the updates. I appreciate the work you put into this, Ian. And I did receive feedback from both existing shelters that they really appreciate being part of that subcommittee meeting. In regards to the York County Shelter Program standing up the warming shelter, which we discussed being October fifteenth is kind of a really important timeframe, will the passage of this ordinance in two weeks, presuming it does pass? So that, that would be a new location. I'm just wondering if that will delay the standing up of that shelter? And if there's a way we can be strategic, because they are such a partner with us and that warming shelter is so important with the number of unhoused folks we have? Does that question make sense to Steve and Ian? And maybe it's about timing of our second read or I don't, I don't know how to address it.
Who's operating the, the warming shelter?
York County Shelter Program.
Who already operates shelters in our community, already operates shelters in other communities? So that I wouldn't see this a lot, a heavy lift for them to make out the application for this facility at all, so.
And I think we discussed that, too. That wouldn't be a problem for them. I thought they were, at the meeting we were at, I think they were directly asked that.
And they said they're very good at standing up shelters in a very short period of time and I expressed my concern around that.
Yeah.
That the clock is ticking.
But are we making it harder for that to happen by doing this in two weeks? Presumably?
Anything in here, something you wouldn't want to see happen for the, for the emergency warming shelter?
No, and it will be in full compliance, yeah. No, no, and it will be in full compliance because of their reporting to their funding source. But I just a question. Just trying to be, think about those ripple effects.
We just have to cross that bridge when, when we get to it because I just, gosh, how do I say? And I'm, I'm not feeling their pain because they've had so long a period of time to be at this and they're just now getting there.
You know, the, one of the things I would do.
This, this isn't a heavy lift for the shelter. I, I wouldn't think. Because they do this daily, they know.
But we could forward this to them now and they could say you should start getting.
Make sure this site is ready.
Start working on some of this, right?
They were here, they were in the.
If they're not already working on this stuff, I, that, that is their own fault.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Public, it's open tonight, right?
Oh, it's been public for two weeks.
No.
I provided the, the York County Shelter Program, Megan Gendron, a copy weeks ago.
This is, to me, to me, this ordinance is to make sure we have safe shelters. And so they should be working on this.
So that just not anybody can throw up a shelter and say it's a shelter.
It's, it's five, five requirements for the license application.
Yeah.
And it's having a standard operating procedure plan in place.
Jonathan?
Yeah, just, I think that, you know, they've been doing this for a while. Obviously, we got a little bit of time before it starts getting really cold. So they should have most of this sort of documentation and stuff in place, I would think. So I'm sure we'll, we'll work with them to get, get them where they need to be. And I don't think anybody wants to see them not have a warming shelter, so we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah. We'll make sure they have it. We can do something.
So that was the first reading and we'll do the second reading at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Moving right along. An order to approve amendments to Chapter one forty-nine licensing and Chapter one twenty-eight fire prevention pursuant to the elimination of the Office of Fire Marshal effective June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. This must be read on two occasions. This is the first occasion and I believe you had, that was all in your packet. So is anybody presenting on this? Steve?
I can present on this. So pursuant to the action, the emergency ordinance was put in place on June thirtieth of this year. It's now time within that ninety-one day window to act upon said ordinance amendments to make them permanent if, if the council so chooses. With the elimination of the Office of the, of the Fire Marshal, I sat with our administrative team, our chief code officer and the fire chief to review Chapters ninety, one twenty, one forty-nine, one sixty-one, one sixty-four, and two eighty of our, of our current codes to see where the delegation to the Fire Marshal, in or the Fire Marshal's office was remaining in the codes and to further disseminate that out. So the work product that you have in, in, that was in the emergency ordinance that was passed by the city council and we've been in effect to date since that point in time is in your packet here tonight without further amendment. It accounts for predominantly in Chapter one forty-nine and Chapter, which is their, you know, licensing, as well as Chapter one twenty-eight, which is the fire code. And it looks predominantly at the reassignment of duties to the chief code officer as well as to the fire chief and/or their delegates to assume those prior responsibilities. So those, those amendments have been made in here related but unrelated, unrelated to this topic as well. There is a item on the agenda here later this evening for the reorganization of the code and planning office, which falls in alignment with these amendments that were made by emergency ordinance and that we seek to have made as part of permanent establishment of the ordinances themselves. So entertain any questions at this point in time as far as the amendments are concerned. Predominant of the amendments are in Chapter one twenty-eight, which is your fire code, which again, looks at reassigning those areas of prior responsibilities to the code, chief code enforcement officer and/or the fire chief.
And I believe we've seen this multiple times. So it won't be the first time we've all seen it, or the second. And we'll see it again because this is the first reading. Jonathan, go ahead.
Just a quick question, Steve. I see building official as being one of the replacements. Is that codes?
Can you say that again?
Building official?
Building official, yes.
Is that under codes?
Codes, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying.
All right, any other questions?
So when, when it says the building official, that's referring to our code officers. It'd fall under the code officers.
All right. Moving right along. And I really think Allison put this in just because she'll know I'll stumble over all these numbers. In order to accept a grant agreement with the United States of America Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration identified as grant number three dash, am I doing it right? Okay. Three dash twenty-three dash zero zero four four dash zero three eight dash two zero two three with a date, with a date offered August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of a hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. The, and authorize Steve Buck in his capacity as city manager to execute the grant agreement on behalf of the city of Sanford. The grant agreement is made pursuant to the airport capital improvement program design, bidding and construction administration for a slurry seal and marking the east ramp at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. Okay. Do we need anyone to report out on this or?
I'll report out on this. Allison was unable to attend the meeting this evening. She got delayed in, in returning from vacation. So we've gone through this with our legal counsel. Legal counsel provided the language for the council to adopt this, this evening. You're familiar with the project. The, the amount from the FAA, we have the cities match, it was approved as part of this year's capital program for the slurry seal of the east side ramp. If, if you ever want the opportunity to read this grant in its entirety, oh, yeah, just, just, my goodness.
Thanks for the offer.
Steve, I had trouble just reading this.
Well, but if you, what I'm referencing is, because I did, I, I read through these things before putting pen ink to, to paper, but if, the, oh my goodness, the engineering that's in the language and all of this, not just the Buy American clause and stuff like that, but, you know, anti-texting policies and propagations that are, what does that have to do with, with funding for, you know, slurry seal and a ramp? It's, 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 they're very large documents. So we've gone through a lot, we've gone through with our legal department. The timing on this is, is very tight. The FAA director sent a reminder notice that you haven't documented, you know, legal counsel hasn't documented. So I pre-signed the document so that legal counsel, if you approve it tonight and you sign it, we get the paperwork to fill. Our attorney, first thing in the morning, he's then able to sign off on that. We're in agreement and we meet the deadline by a day. So all of that has been, been put in motion and already reviewed by a legal department. So. So I'd ask for your acceptance on receiving this federal aviation funds this evening so we can move forward with this very important project. It has been fifteen years plus since that was last done and it's time for a revamp on, on the apron. So thank you.
So why rush it every fifteen years? Bob?
Move approve?
Excellent. Second? Super? All those in favor? Did you see Jonathan was one, was second in that? Good. Moving right along. And this one I want to thank Steve for because we talked about this at the last meeting and made a motion and put some words together. And I think Steve, in his wisdom, which is much better than mine, called the, the lawyers that we have as a city and asked him to take a look at it and what should the wording be? So thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. And this is to clarify amendments in the Sanford City Council Code of Conduct, Section six to read, except for the purpose of inquiry and investigations under Section two oh five point ten of the city charter, which that was the part we were concerned about, how do we investigate? which that was the part we were concerned about, how do we investigate and stuff? So except for that, a city council may not give direction to a city staff but must make all requests through the city manager's office with full knowledge of the mayor. So that is going to be our new wording, which covers the basis.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change.
Thank you, do we have a second, Nate?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, and thank you, Steve, for having my back, I appreciate it. And the next is in order to authorize the reorganization of the Department of Codes and Planning by, and this is, everything has to go one at a time. So the creation of the permit and safety specialist within codes, two, defunding the position of Director of Planning effective 10/30/23, three, authorizing hiring back of a third code officer, and four, moving the net sum of resources of $90,882 from planning wages to code wages for the remainder of the fiscal year 23/24 effective 10/31/23. Do I have a motion?
Do you want separate motions, or just the whole?
Nope, we can do it all together. So Pete, so moved?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Jonathan, any discussion?
Well, should we describe what's happening a little bit for the public?
Yes.
Yes.
It can be short.
Yeah, and I think Steve already hit upon it a couple of times.
Hit, hit.
So, yeah, so this is pursuant to the reorganization of codes and planning. So the city has perfected its permitting process in a multitude of ways, the last derivation of which was the permitting really was being mustered through by our planning director. We've been absent that position for nearly a year at this point in time. So pursuant to that, our chief code enforcement officer, Jamie Cole, has taken on the dual role of director of both planning and codes during that period of time as well. In order to perfect the permitting process, Jamie directed one of his code officers, Alex Hoare, into basically what became this new job description that's included in your packet as the permit and safety specialist to muster through that process. I want to commend them on the accomplishment that they did during this period of time and that they cleaned up 100% of the backlog for pre-apps. They've cleaned up all of the backlog for any site plan and/or planning board applications, all in stead of record-breaking number of new applications coming forward in that same time period. So we've had nearly a year now to test out this format and this process, and I believe by all accounts, it's going very well, it's very efficient. So this ultimately, through the reorganization, it defunds the fire marshal position. And note specifically, they asked you not to eliminate the position of the director of planning, but to defund the position, right? So that if it ever needs to come back in the future, the position's there. You can then, because you have the authority to authorize type and number via the budget, you can put that back as might need to be necessary in the future. But right now, under the reorganization, you're going to eliminate, you've already defunded the fire marshal's position, you defund the planning position. So the net amount for when that person retires from that position, that $90,000 will come back over to codes. I've given you a full account of, and this structure ties to all of the code amendments that you did for Chapter 128 and 149. It accounts for the reassignment of those job duties. The new job description for the permit and safety specialist is in your packet. Once that position job description was finalized, as what we've learned over this last year, we then sent that to MRI, which was the consultant that did the wage and classification, and used their independent analysis to score that position. So that scoring gave us the classification number that then placed it relevant to the other positions in Class 8. So that set the position for us. So looking at the fiscal analysis, the first year budgetary reduction is $63,144 less the retirement, in order to carry the planning director through to retirement is $21,269. So at the end of this reorganization, for this first year implementation, we have $41,875 left in available resources that are approved within the city's fiscal year budget, assuming that you reassign those. We'd like to utilize a portion of that $41,000 to finish up the safety and permit specialist training as far as NFPA certification, as well as to have Jamie Cole obtain plan certification as well. The second year full savings with the reorganization, absent the fire marshal position and the director of planning, is about $149,920 net savings to the city overall. We're still being able to achieve ever more efficiently the same level of organizational responsibilities as was had with the other two positions still here. So that's my quick summation of the reorganization of codes and planning. So again, Jamie Cole will serve as director of both departments. And again, I commend you, Jamie, for the work that you've done over the last year in doing that. He has a very strong handle. He's working with our new planner, Aaron Moriarty, as far as getting all of the code amendments that we'll need to accommodate the state's requirements under LD 2003. Also in that same time period, they have kicked out the RFP now for the market analysis to be done. They've worked hand in hand with Matt Hill on the SS4A, that grant that's going under study. Also have kicked off the comprehensive plan. Aaron Moriarty has also worked under Jamie's direction with our communications coordinator as to how they implement the new software package that the city council authorized for the comp plan, the market analysis, the SS4A, there's another study I'm forgetting about in here. There's another one that's coming in that same time period. So I just can't speak highly enough of all that they've accomplished under Jamie's direction. So again, thank you for that, Jamie. That's the nuts and bolts of the reorganization.
All right. And how is the turnaround with permits now? Because I know at some point they seem to be stacking up, and is that?
Stacking up's not allowed.
Currently, we're still slightly behind. I had some medical issues that have slowed down my ability in the last couple of weeks, but we're holding about two and a half weeks, which is not horrible, other communities have much longer.
Yeah.
We strive to keep it under two. I was issuing them today at one day under three weeks. So because of the holiday, we got to almost three, but we're trying to hold them around two.
Okay, well, and you make sure you take care of yourself, too.
We are.
That's the most important thing. All right, go ahead.
And I also did not mention, as part of that reorganization, so since we're taking one of our pre-existing code officers and dedicating that individual to the permitting process and the review thereof, part of this reorganization accounts for hiring back in a new code officer to maintain three certified code officers in the department. You'll still also have, the permit specialist will also be a certified code officer to provide backup for Jamie as well. I think that permit and safety specialist is a great mid-level management position in there, training for certifications and such under that, to provide backup for Jamie as director of the two departments, so.
Excellent. Any other questions? Anne?
The only comment I have, and I think Steve knows I struggle a little bit with the understanding of the steps in the market analysis, but I'm just going to say, in full transparency at this meeting, that it's confusing to me when we have somebody that really has a dual position, that their step wouldn't increase. So that's just, maybe that's something that will be addressed through, I know there's some work being done with our employee handbook and other things. But in my simple mind, if somebody's taking on the roles of two very important high-range and step positions, I would think that their step might adjust. No, that's more a comment than anything.
All right, any other questions?
I'd just like to commend you for getting that number down to two weeks or thereabouts. That's excellent compared to where we were, so thank you, appreciate all the hard work.
You see, I knew we should have done something, gotten your family in here, embarrassed them and you, yeah.
I think he just wants a longer vacation.
Can I have a motion, please?
Yeah, motion to move forward.
Okay, Anne, a second, Nate?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And moving on, do we have any comments from any of the council? Pete?
Yeah, it's school season, look out for school buses and go to all the sporting in town and support the local schools. Lot of football, lot of field hockey, lot of soccer. Get out there and go support the kids, thanks.
All right, Anne?
And don't forget cross-country this Friday. And I will just share that my youngest is a cross-country runner, and they are loving, loving the trail that was done right before school started. She's like, when did they do that, Mom, that's amazing? So it's-
This weekend, we did a great loop, it's awesome.
Yeah, so they're very excited, and they will use that for this Friday's meet. I want to mention two other things. One, Friends of Downtown's third annual selfies with scarecrows event will be this October, October 16th through October 31. We're recruiting local businesses and organizations. I'm hoping Parks and Rec might participate again this year, hope Brady's off. But it's a really fun activity where people put up scarecrows, and then you go around town and get selfies with them. And for more info, check out Friends of Downtown's Facebook page. And the other thing is that Sanford Performing Arts Center's season was announced. I'm sure lots of folks saw that, but amazing lineup for this season. If you haven't been to the Sanford Performing Arts Center, you need to go. It's a state-of-the-art, world-class-type facility here in our little town, so check that out, that's it.
Excellent, anyone else, Bob?
I will second the performance center, went there for several shows last year. Excellent, excellent time, very affordable, and obviously a beautiful environment. The thing that I wanted to talk about was Garbage to Gardens. If you've been on Facebook, or if you're already using Garbage to Gardens, you know that they have moved their pickup day from Tuesday back to Monday. So for me anyways, it doesn't align with my rubbish pickup day, which is kind of a pain in the neck. But I'm also reading into that, that, and I think this was also part of their email, the signups for the program have been less than what they had anticipated, which I really think is unfortunate, because I think the garbage-to-garden concept, you know, is a very valuable part of our overall maintenance program, solid waste maintenance program. So I would encourage people, if you're on the cusp, if you've been thinking about it, please think about, more seriously about signing up. I think it costs about $19 a month? Yeah, okay, not about, I think it costs $19 a month. You get a bucket, which you scrape your, basically your kitchen waste, kitchen scraps, garbage, if you want to call it that, into the bucket. There's some other things you can put in there, paper towels, things like that, there's a big list for it. And then you just put the bucket out in front of your house in Sanford, it'll be on Mondays, and you get a brand-new washed bucket, not a brand-new, a cleaned washed bucket, that replaces the bucket that you have. So we've been doing this for, my family's been doing this for, since it started, it's been two, three months now. My daughter also participates up in Wyndham, and she's been using it. The program runs fine, and there's additional benefits. Like I got some, two or three bags of mulch, you know, they're like sandbag size of mulch for free. There were other programs that helped you, they would come and help you put together a raised bed garden, for instance, if you wanted to create a garden. So there's a lot of other benefits than just having your kitchen scraps hauled away for you as being part of this program. So as I said, if you've been thinking about it, now's the time, you know, to pull the trigger on it, if that's politically correct anyways, to get started on it and see if we can get those numbers up and keep the program going here in Sanford and Springville, so that's it.
Now, they said they would help you build this raised garden, and my husband's already done that part. I would say four or five years now, we've had almost no harvest from our gardens, so could they advise him on that also?
It's called water, they water it every once in a while.
You said he couldn't cook, what makes you think he could garden? Poor Bill is on the other end of this going, wait a second.
Yeah, hopefully he's not listening. Anne, could you read your email while we're still talking so that I'll know what to put on an agenda and what agenda you want that on? I wasn't quite sure, so I thought maybe you could clarify. Does anybody else have any comments before we go on to the agenda items?
Can I just add to Anne's reference to the Performing Arts Center? I just got an email from Brett Williams this weekend. It said he was just contacted by the US Army Field Band, and they're coming to Sanford to do a free concert for the community. It's a concert band and the soldiers' chorus, and it'll be Sunday, April 16th at 3:00 PM.
Wow.
Add that to the tremendous lineup.
Very popular.
Yeah, that was very popular. Okay, let's move on to agenda items. By the way, I have trouble turning this way towards Steve, so I think I'm going to get him one of those long poking sticks so he could poke me in the arm so I can- Yeah, you know, they have those back scratchers that, you know, they come out from within, so you can-
So I have one, I was at the transfer station this weekend, and a gentleman asked Dee, who runs the transfer station, whether there was a hazardous waste disposal area. Are we going to be talking about that? Because that is a difficult one, if you want to get rid of stuff that you can't just throw in the regular trash, an area where it can be put, obviously would have to be a fee probably, but.
Which subcommittee would that go under?
I don't know if we would go with oils and stuff, but you have fertilizers and other things that are considered-
Yes, Bob said solid waste.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
So let's put that under that.
I don't know if they've talked about it at the staff level yet, I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, pre-COVID, we used to be able to do community collection days in conjunction with DEP. They'd come in with overpacked containers, people could bring in paint, solvents, old pesticides and herbicides, but that went away during COVID. So I'm not even familiar with how they're, if they're back to doing that again yet or not, but.
I mean, we do have the room, if we did it once or twice a year, just let people know during this week we will have the option, and then not have to do it all the time. I think once, I think a couple of times a year would be sufficient.
I think so, too.
That way we don't have to house it at all times.
They used to have free dump day for like your old washer and dryers and stuff like that, so, you know, maybe they can do the hazardous waste instead, you know?
Yeah, not the free dump day.
No, they're not doing that anymore.
And at the last meeting, Steve, we spoke about having a report out for the opioid funds. I'm wondering if that needs to go to subcommittee first? Would that be like the safety committee and to find if there are any more questions around it and then to bring it to the public?
Yeah, I'm not, excuse me, I'm not sure what committee you put that to, but I talked with DC Small again today, because he's on the opioid recovery committee this Thursday. I'm going to zoom into their committee meeting to lend comment into future allocations of funds, because they're still struggling with that. In talking with DC Small again today, there's so many of the strategies that are failing because of capacity issues, so is it a most appropriate mechanism to use some of those funds to bolster like SUD beds and mental health facilities and such under that? And as far as our unallocated funds at this point in time and future funds, yeah, I asked Eric to start an internal conversation based upon what he's hearing from the state. The reason I'm asking for that is I don't want to have the city allocate those funds for areas that we could apply to the state funds and get, but use it in the areas that, you know, we're not going to be able to and whatnot, so. So I'm going to rely on Eric for a strong opinion on that, in that regard.
Okay, and so you'll get back, just whether it's going to be in a subcommittee or a full, how you want to handle that?
Probably would be public safety, I think, is where that should be, because I think it will tie into, one of the items that Eric was putting on there for us today, well, for tomorrow, put onto public safety was-
well, for tomorrow, to put onto public safety was that organizational chart, tying the mental health and the paramedicine program together, and all of the other community elements. We're, we can check all of those boxes, so, you know. But, but the opioid, the use of, the future use of the opioid funds will, will go to fill some of those voids that are, that are currently in that chart.
Right, thank you. Ann?
Well, and Mayor, I think that ties in really well and addresses the, one of the concerns I had for an agenda item, which actually did hit the public safety subcommittee meeting, but we ran out of time this last meeting. So there was this discussion on additional resources that M.H.U. might need to address current city needs. And it's, you know, that may be the opioid funds that aren't currently allocated. And then the other question was addressed, which was what we were doing with the Retirement Officer Gordon related to staffing in the M.H.U., and Chief shared that once we have some folks returning from training, I don't know if this resonates with other folks at that meeting, that we'd look at filling that empty slot hopefully in December. Do you remember that, Jonathan? Being, was that, yeah.
So that has been answered for you?
That piece was. It's more that what resources do we need to allocate to the M.H.U. or to the P.D. to address the unhoused and the changes we're seeing?
Okay. Anyone else with any future agenda items? Okay, good.
Can you declare us adjourned?
I will declare us adjourned at eight thirty-three.